We'll go ahead and get started on the swearing in. It's second in the agenda.
Sorry.
Okay, so, I am one. Okay, good. All right. Good evening. So, we're going to be doing the swearing in individually. So, Councilor Coleman, if you would join me. Perfect. All right. If you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Susan Coleman.
I, Susan Coleman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home.
And the council code of conduct.
And the council code of conduct.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of councillor.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of councillor.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of said city.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of said city.
During the period for which I was elected.
During the period for which I was elected.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Richards. All right, ready?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Please raise your right hand. I, Dylan Richards.
I, Dylan Richards.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home.
And the council code of conduct.
And the council code of conduct.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of councillor.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of councillor.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
And will, oh, God.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully dis.
Perform. The duties of the office.
Yes.
Of said city.
Of said city.
During the period.
During the period.
For which I was elected.
For which I was elected.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. All right. Welcome. Please raise your right hand. I, Josh Thorsted.
I, Josh Thorsted.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Sweet Home.
Of the city of Sweet Home.
And the council code of conduct.
And the council code of conduct.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of councillor.
The duties of councillor.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of said city.
Of said city.
During the period for which I was elected.
And during the period of which I was elected.
Congratulations. All right, and Mayor Muller. Sir. Please raise your right hand. Thank you. I, Greg Muller.
I, Greg Muller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances.
Charter orders.
Of the city of Sweet Home.
Of the city of Sweet Home.
And the council code of conduct.
And the council code of conduct.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of councillor.
The duties of councillor.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
And the duties of the office.
Of said city.
Of said city.
During the period for which I was elected. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Someday I will get this. And now, congratulations to everyone. And if you'd like, we can take a brief recess to meet with your family or take any photos, or we can move directly into the nominations, as the councillor, as the council wishes. Okay. All right. So, let's move on. Okay. So, let's start with the nominations for mayor. So, as city manager, I will open the floor for nominations for the office of mayor.
Madam City Manager, before I make my nomination, I believe that it would be very appropriate to say a couple of things to explain the rationale for this decision. I have been attending city council meetings since 1979, when I graduated off and on, not continuously, but off and on. And I've seen a lot of mayors and councillors come and go. And I believe it's very important that we address some issues. Our current mayor has been on the fire department for 25 years, serving this community, and has served our community on the council for 16. As a businessman, a family man, a churchman, a good person that has social obligations of their own, they were part of the council that saved the money in their budget, even in hard times, to pay cash for this building. Who carried us through coming into this building and has worked with three different city managers, has managed to help us maintain a good budget, a good city, and through the COVID crises, helped our city continue on with all the craziness going on in the world at that time. And during the fires, when smoke was filling our own lungs, they were evacuating Crawfordsville, and I believe the Kalapuyia was on fire, it is my understanding that there was 52 fires in our own city, and we didn't lose a building. We have been through a lot. And we owe this man a lot because of the nights, the weekends, and all the craziness that nobody will ever know that goes on in the background of running any city. Sweet Home is no exception. So, as I make my motion tonight, I do it with the deepest gratitude for the work and the years and the service that our mayor has dedicated in his life to our community. It is a great honor to have had, worked with him, and know him, and I will enjoy and love working with him as we continue. But I also believe his family, his business, his life deserves a break. And so, we have somebody else on our council that is amazing and has served us well. Never any controversy, never any harsh words. This person has been the executive assistant to the president of Corbin University. They have worked at our Capitol and know legislators well, the ins and outs of the committees. They know parliamentary process and Robert's Rules of Order. They do their homework and ask questions in meetings. I have had the privilege of watching this person, and I am so sorry, my nose and my eyes are running, of watching this person know and understand what's going on and ask the questions and serve on committees well. A person with a family, a person with a life that loves our community and has been here. And it is an honor for me, this time, to nominate Councilor Susan Coleman to be our next mayor.
Okay, so, Councilor Susan Coleman is nominated. Are there any further nominations?
I would like to nominate Angelita Sanchez for mayor also.
All right. So, Councilor Sanchez is also nominated. Are there any further nominations for the opposite mayor? All right. Then if not, nominations are closed. Okay. So, I think we'll go ahead and do a vote. So, please vote. Okay. All right. Well, let's move forward, starting with Councilor Coleman. Coleman, in favor? Well, okay. All right. So, that's seven votes for Councilor Coleman. All right. So, I think we will go close. Does anybody have anything else they would like to say before we move forward, or should we go directly? Is it nominations for President Protem?
May I say something? I just want to take a moment to thank Dylan for his nomination. I think that this is a very historic opportunity for Sweet Home to have a female city manager, a female mayor, and a woman of color nominated for mayor of the city of Sweet Home. I do fully support Mayor Coleman in her position. I thank you for everything that you've done for our city, and I'm really looking forward to working with you.
All right. Well, congratulations.
I do want to say thank you. It's been an honor to be here. Thank you for the kind words, Councilor Gorley. And I feel that Councilor Coleman, now Mayor Coleman, is going to do a phenomenal job for the city.
Okay. All received nominations for President Protem at this time.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a nomination for Mayor Protem, and again, with some explanation. I believe we need continuity. We have a new city manager. We have new city staff. We have a lot of things in the mix and a lot of things going on, and we need somebody to assist you in a way that helps our citizens the best that they can, someone who knows the developers who are in the mix of wanting to invest in our community, who understands some of the things that have been going on in the background as we move forward within our city. And at this time, to help you and assist you the best so that our citizens benefit the most, I would like to nominate Greg Muller.
Any further nominations?
I would like to nominate Angelita Sanchez.
Any others? Or shall I close? I will close the nominations. Ready for a vote?
All right. All in favor of Councilor Muller? Four votes for Councilor Muller and three votes for Councilor Sanchez. Congratulations, Councilor Muller. So, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. But before we do so, I would just like to say sincere gratitude to Mayor Muller for these years of service from the staff and from the community. All of your hard work and guidance has been very well appreciated. Also want to say congratulations to all of those nominated and all of the selected. So, now we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Are we ready? Madam Mayor, I believe we're ready.
Okay. So, before we get started, I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Councilor Gorley, for such kind words for our mayor, our previous mayor. I had some words that I had considered sharing as well, but I just think you summed it up well. So, thank you. Thank you also for the kind words for me. I was blown away by those things and also by all of you supporting me. I just am humbled and honored that you all will trust me in leading this, these meetings and these proceedings. So, let's get started. Roll call, please. Mayor Coleman, present. Protem Muller.
Present.
Councilor Richards.
Here.
Councilor Sanchez.
Here.
Councilor Trask.
Here.
Councilor Gorley.
Here.
Councilor Thorsted.
Here.
Like I read, let the record show, there are seven present and zero absent. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Keep in mind that points A, B, and C are all part of the consent agenda, as well as last council meeting minutes. If any councillor would like to pull something from the consent agenda to new business, please let me know now. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. First, our motion in a second. Julie, roll call, please. Councilor Trask.
Yes.
Councilor Gorley.
Yes.
Councilor Thorsted.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Councilor Muller.
Yes.
Councilor Richards.
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez.
Yes.
Okay. So, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Is there anybody here who would like to come forward? As you get seated, please remember to give me your name and your address for the record.
I'm Nancy White. My address is 911 Sixth Avenue. And what I am here to speak to you about is, we live in a nice neighborhood. It's an older neighborhood, but it's a nice one. We have families with little kids. It's friendly, except for one house. This one house has been a problem for over two years. There have been complaints of rats in the neighborhood. This house has trash piled to the roof in the garage, bags of garbage. They spill out into the driveway. They have wrecked vehicles that they work on dismantled. They spill out into the front yard, into the driveway. Quite often, kids have to walk out into the street to go around all of this mess. The house right now looks worse than a landfill. Code enforcement has been working on it and working on it and working on it. They get it partially cleared up, and it looks halfway decent, and then it deteriorates again. My question is, can you go, as the city council and as our city lawyer, go over the codes, the rules and regulations, and do something to strengthen them so that it doesn't get to this point? So, it doesn't take years to clean this up to where there is something you can do, something that code enforcement can do, to keep it from getting to this point. It's an embarrassment. It's horrible to live next door to it. It's gone beyond a joke. It is something that lowers the property values, is frustrating. The crime in our neighborhood has gone up to the point where we're going to be forming a neighborhood watch. We hate to leave our house if we see people around this house. You worry about driving away and them knowing that you're gone. So, my question is, can you do anything to put more force behind the rules and regulations so this doesn't keep going on?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. City Manager Young, is there any way that we can look into these codes to see if something further can happen?
We would actually be happy to review the codes and potentially bring back something to the council.
Really?
Okay. We would like to actually review the codes and bring back some potential suggestions to the council. We have some that we would like to discuss as early as next council meeting, but we also would like to discuss a little bit more internally and.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for coming. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward at this time? Okay. Moving on, there's no old business. New business, we have requests for council action, safe routes to school pedestrian crossing. Can we hear a staff report, please?
Yes. In late 2020, the city staff applied for a Safe Routes to School grant for a pedestrian crossing at Highway 228 and Second Avenue. The application was for ramp improvements and for a rapid flashing beacon that pedestrians could push a button and act to activate it, which would slow down traffic on the road, allowing them to cross safely. Soon after, we received that grant in late 2020, early 2021, was when ODOT was, forgive the pun, ramping up on their project. And they, thanks for the pity laugh, they were actually doing work on the road as part of that project, and those, the ramps were included in their project. And so, by waiting for them to finish that project, it reduced the cost of the Safe Routes to School project, which is why it's been delayed to this point. Finally, the ramps in that area are completed. They are, that's one of the areas where they will, the contractors will not be returning to. The ramps are done in that, on that, at that location. And so, it's time to install the rapid flashing beacon. To do that work, we have asked our engineer of record, or one of the partners of our engineer of record, Civil West, to do the preliminary and construction engineering for that project. In your packet is a contract for you to review. It's approximately $11,000 for the engineering work. The actual construction, the procurement of the equipment and installation will be an additional, unclear at this point, but the original application was for a total of $117,000. And so, we expect it definitely won't be more than $100,000. It'll probably be substantially less since the ramps are not included in that. The grant covers 80% of the cost of the project. And in addition, ODOT has informed us that there is another fund that could potentially be tapped to cover the other 20% match. And so, we could be looking at getting the entire cost of this project back. But at the most, we'd be paying 20%. And once we get an approved contract, the engineer can get started, and then we'll put out an RFP for the remainder of the work.
Any questions of council?
Madam Mayor, I have several questions, actually. I live on Second Avenue. I've lived on that for, since 1974 or something like that. When I was employed, I don't remember having to stop at a crosswalk there forever, maybe 10 times in 50 years. I am for this. Don't get me wrong. I'm for this. But on the other side of that, I think we have other places would be, would necessary to, and I'll give you the example of that, is Hawthorne. It's horrible there. And the school knows. They can't do anything about it. It's a mess. I mean, it's a total mess. to, and I'll give you the example of that, is Hawthorne. It's horrible there, and the school knows, they can't do anything about it. It's a mess. I mean, it's a total mess. My kids were on that street. We were fortunate enough, we didn't have to take them up there and walk across. Sometimes they did, and there's still kids on that, on that street. I don't see them coming across that crosswalk, but it's a good thing. I'm not saying it's not a good thing, but I just think we need to research some of that other stuff, too, because there's lots of these things that could be done. And I'm looking forward to having it done. I think the kids will be safer. There's maybe 10 down my street, maybe, I don't know.
Sure. In response to that, we put in an application typically every time the application period is open for Safe Routes to School. It's a great, it's a great program. We always have a need. Our most recent application was for improvements next to the junior high on Mountain View, which is also a huge problem. And unfortunately, we were not successful in that particular application. But we will continue to apply, and we will continue to, we'll add Hawthorne to the mix. I will say, though, we do have funding for sidewalk improvements, which we have not been spending as much as we could. And I believe there are lots of projects that we'd like to work into that funding.
May I have one more thing?
Counselor Trask, I'm gonna see if anybody else would like to speak to the matter before you speak. Yes, you can have, according to council rules, you can have a second chance after, oh yeah, we are, after everybody else has an opportunity. Does anybody else want to speak to this matter? Go ahead, Counselor Trask.
Blair, what brought this on? Was there a complaint? Was there a request?
This particular application was done just about the time that I started with the city. And so, I, to be honest, do not know what prompted the application for this particular one. But after, in my time here, we have had a number of complaints from the public concerned about the safety of crossing Holly Road.
Thank you.
Counselor Trask, I think I might be able to speak a little bit to that. I live on the other side of that as well. The schools have tried to promote children walking to school. I, as a parent of small children, I did not want them crossing 228 without something there. And at some point in time, a bus did get rear-ended by a log truck, which couldn't slow down coming off the hill. It wasn't speeding, it was just heavy. So I think that with that and with the applications that were being put forward, that's how it came about. But we do have $968,000 left in that account that we need to look into others.
I'm curious as to why they took out Clark Millen in Highway 20.
Oh, of that application?
I mean, why, they don't have one there.
Oh, you mean the school district, why did they, why did they change the?
ODOT taking it out, the light for the school zone there.
Now, when that-
That's close, and I mean, in my opinion, that's pretty close to Hawthorne.
My understanding was that the school district had coordinated with ODOT and determined that that was not a utilized crossing for students. That it's, it was, I mean, certainly, any pedestrian crossing is good to keep safe, but I think with the school district had communicated with ODOT and their boundaries were drawn in such a way that there weren't anyone, there wasn't anyone crossing Main Street to get to Hawthorne. Because I believe the north side of Main Street is all Foster Elementary. Don't quote me on that.
Okay, so, I think your high school and junior high students would be crossing there, but-
They probably don't, because it's precarious crossing. So, that's why you're not seeing kids walk there.
But that was, that was a decision made by the school district and ODOT.
If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
So moved, as recommended.
Second.
Julie, roll call, please.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Richards?
Yes.
Councilor Mahler?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Okay, we have seven i's and no n's. Moving on to ordinance bills. We have a request for council action and first reading of ordinance bills regarding number one for 2023, parking zone amendment.
Okay, begin. Periodically, we review ordinances, especially when we receive complaints, and in this case, we have received a few complaints about parking in the downtown area. Right now, we have parking zones in our ordinance that, where the city manager is authorized to dictate the duration of parking and order public works to mark parking spaces. That is limited currently to Main Street from 228 to 18th Avenue, Long Street from Ames Creek Bridge to 18th Avenue, 9th Avenue from Main Street to Nandina, 10th Avenue from Long Street to Main Street, 12th Avenue from Cal Maya to Nandina, 13th Avenue from Cal Maya Street to Nandina Street, and 15th Avenue from Main Street to Nandina Street. There have been some areas that have been left out that are, that we've received complaints about parking on and want to add those to these parking zones so that staff have the ability to set similar parking standards to our duration and marked spaces. Those areas are the rest of Main Street, the rest of Long Street, which are both arterial and arterial roads in our system, 43rd Avenue between Long Street and Airport Road, Airport Road between 43rd Avenue and 49th Avenue, which are, those are also arterial roads, as is 49th Avenue between Airport Road and Main Street. And then, curiously, 15th Avenue between Long Street and Main Street was left off the list when it's very solidly within the downtown area. We were also requesting that to add the north side of Cal Maya between its end at the fire station and 15th Avenue, as that's adjacent to commercial areas and regulated parking is appropriate. The other side of Cal Maya is residential uses, and so would remain with regular on-street parking to benefit those residents. So, staff has drafted an ordinance that puts these changes into place, it's in your packet for your review, and we're happy to take any questions you might have about this change.
Any questions of counselors? Somebody would like to make a motion?
So moved, as recommended.
Second.
Okay, Julie, roll call, please. We have a motion in a second.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Richards?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Okay, we have seven i's and no n's. Moving on to the next request for council action, ordinance number two for 2023, vehicle camping ordinance.
Excuse me, Mayor. Do you want to hold the first reading for that ordinance now, or would you like to handle first readings altogether if the other ordinances are?
We can do that now. I'm thinking altogether, but now's good. It breaks it up.
Okay. And then, as a reminder, I believe this was in my report, but if the, since the voting wasn't unanimous, if you choose to have a second reading of the ordinance after the first reading, a second reading by title only, the council may, if that is your wish. But I'll go ahead and do the, I'll read. Ordinance Bill number one for 2023, ordinance number blank. Sweet Home Ordinance, amending SHMC Chapter should be Section 10.08.150, Parking Zones with Expediency Clause. Whereas SHMC 10.08.150 authorizes the city manager to establish and maintain parking zones on certain streets with marked spaces and time limitations for parking, and whereas activity within the downtown area and increased development throughout the city necessitate authorized parking zones in additional areas, now therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, SHMC Section 10.08.150 subsection A is amended to read, A, the city manager is authorized to establish and maintain zones to be known as parking zones in the following streets. One, Main Street. Two, Long Street. Three, 9th Avenue from Main Street to Nandina Street. Four, 10th Avenue from Long Street to Main Street. Five, 12th Avenue from Cal Maya Street to Nandina Street. Six, 13th Avenue from Cal Maya Street to Nandina Street. Seven, 15th Avenue from Long Street to Nandina Street. Eight, the north side of Cal Maya Street from its western terminus to 15th Avenue. Nine, 43rd Avenue from Long Street to Airport Road. Ten, Airport Road from 43rd Avenue to 49th Avenue. Eleven, 49th Avenue from Airport Road to Main Street. And twelve, and from time to time hereafter, as traffic conditions required in such other streets, as are selected by resolution of the city for the location of such zones. Section two, Expediency Clause, it is hereby adjudged and declared by the Sweet Home City Council that existing conditions are such that this ordinance is needed to be in effect at the time and date of its passage by the city council and approval by the mayor, and it is hereby declaring an emergency to promote the public health, safety, and welfare, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of January 2023. Blank, Mayor attests, City Manager, Ex officio, City Recorder.
Thank you. Counselors, if you're interested in moving it to second reading by title only, please make a motion now.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, they voted unanimous on the first. Okay, so, by title-
We have a motion in a second. I think we need a roll call on that.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Richards?
Yep.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Ordinance Bill number one for 2023, ordinance number blank. Sweet Home Ordinance, amending SHMC Section 10.08.150, Parking Zones with Expediency Clause.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the vehicle camping ordinance.
Counselor? I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry. We'll need a motion to move it to the third and final reading.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the third and final reading on the 24th of this month.
So moved.
Second.
And now, we have a motion and a second, so we'll need a roll call on that as well.
Councilor Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Richards?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you for you guys' help with that.
Can we move on now? Am I good?
Okay. Vehicle camping ordinance. No doubt, many of you have noticed, and we have continued to receive complaints and comments from concerned citizens about this issue. There has been a recent influx of vehicle camping within the city. Currently, we do not have an ordinance that prohibits this. It's treated as, just like regular parking. However, it does have effects on the neighborhoods around it and in the immediate area. When on public property and within public rights of way, vehicle camping is permitted if it complies with parking regulations. Much like camping in public rights of way, vehicle camping has increased in recent years, and the city is constrained by recent Ninth Circuit court decisions, such as Martin v. Boise and Blake v. Grant's Pass, that protect the right of homeless individuals to occupy public places. At the same time, vehicle camping inherently impacts public health and safety. The city cannot prohibit anyone from vehicle camping, however, it can pass time, place, and manner restrictions on the practice. Staff proposed the attached ordinance, which restricts vehicle camping to the police department parking lot between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. The ordinance also, I should amend, is, has a clause that allows the council by resolution to dictate other locations instead of the police department or in addition to the police department. Staff believe that this ordinance complies with the Ninth Circuit's rulings while also addressing the valid safety concerns of Sweet Home residents. As this is an active problem affecting public health and safety, staff have included an expediency clause in the ordinance. And I believe the rest is, as is written in the ordinance, but if you have any questions or concerns, I can take those now.
Counselors, any questions or comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved, as recommended.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilor Richards?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Mahler?
Yes.
Okay, we have seven i's and no n's. That means you can go ahead and read the ordinance for us.
All right. Ordinance Bill number two for 2023, ordinance number blank. Sweet Home Ordinance, amending SHMC Chapter 10.08, Stopping Standing and Parking with Expediency Clause. Whereas motor vehicle camping or the use of a motor vehicle as a temporary place to live has real and detrimental effects on all areas of the city, and whereas recent court decisions protect the right of individuals to obtain shelter, and whereas, as the public health and safety, public health and safety effects of motor vehicle camping need to be addressed as soon as possible, an expediency clause has been included in this ordinance. Now, therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, SHMC Section 10.08.035 is created to read as follows. 10.08.035 Motor Vehicle Camping in Public Parking Areas and Within Public Rights of Way. A, except as permitted in subsection B of this section, the use of a motor vehicle as a temporary place to live, also known as vehicle camping, is prohibited within the city of Sweet Home when the motor vehicle is parked within a publicly owned parking area or within any public right of way. B, motor vehicle camping is permitted at the Sweet Home Police Department parking lot. However, this location may be changed or other locations added as determined by city council resolution. Motor vehicle camping at approved locations is only permitted under the following conditions. One, motor vehicle camping may occur between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Two, the motor vehicle must be operational and capable of moving under its own power. Three, the motor vehicle must be parked entirely within a marked parking space. Four, recreational vehicles, as defined in SHMC Section 10.28.010, are not permitted. Five, any associated personal property must be stored within the vehicle. Section two, Expediency Clause, it is hereby adjudged and declared by the city of Sweet Home, by the Sweet Home City Council, that existing conditions are such that this ordinance is needed to be in effect at the time and date of its passage by the city council and approval by the mayor, and it is hereby declaring an emergency to promote the public health, safety, and welfare, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of January 2023. Blank, Mayor attests, blank, City Manager, Ex officio, City Recorder.
Thank you. And counselors, since we were unanimous at the last vote, I can entertain a motion to for a second reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Julie, roll call, please.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Richards?
Yes.
Ordinance Bill number two for 2023, ordinance number blank. Sweet Home Ordinance, amending SHMC Chapter 10.08, Stopping Standing and Parking with Expediency Clause.
Okay, I can entertain a motion to move to the third reading on the 24th of this month.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Julie, roll call, please.
Councilor Trask?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Richards?
Yep.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
Okay, we have seven i's and no n's. It's moving forward to the third reading on the 24th. Now, we move on to the next ordinance, RV Parking Ordinance Amendment.
Okay. In recent years, the city has experienced a sharp increase in the number of travel trailers and recreational vehicles parking within public rights of way. This has resulted in increased complaints, a rise in costs and use of staff time for trash cleanup and parking enforcement, as well as safety concerns. The city currently has no ordinance prohibiting the parking of travel trailers and recreational vehicles in available on-street parking spaces. They need only comply with parking rules, which typically allow parking for up to two days without moving the vehicle. However, if the RV or trailer is moved a minor distance every two days, it can be parked in the right of way indefinitely. Recreational vehicles and travel trailers are designed for camping and recreating. Their use typically generates wastewater and garbage, much like a residential home. Typically, they are quite large and dangerously block drivers' line of sight. It is often hard for drivers to see children or even adults between parked passenger cars, and it is nearly impossible for drivers to see people behind RVs and travel trailers. Because they are so large, they typically occupy three or even four regular parking spaces, which severely restricts the supply of parking for passenger vehicles. Staff developed the proposed ordinance to respond to these issues. If passed, this ordinance would prohibit the parking of RVs and travel trailers in any public right of way with two exceptions. First, an adjacent property owner could park an uninhabited RV for up to five days every month, as long as it is parked in front of their property. This allows a resident to pack, unpack, or other ways maintain their RV at their home. Second, RVs could park anywhere on Main Street or Long Street between Holly Road and 18th Avenue for up to two hours. This exception allows tourists traveling in RVs to patronize our local businesses. So this is, this is a draft ordinance that we've prepared. We are prepared to answer any questions you might have and make any changes that you might see as necessary.
Any questions or comments from counselors? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, as recommended.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Julie, roll call, please.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
We have seven ayes and no nays. I also want to throw in a thank you for Counselor Richards for taking photos for us today. They're all in front of us. We can now move this or we can now read this.
Okay. Ordinance Bill Number Three for 2023, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance amending SHMC Section 10.28.020 Limited Parking Permit Parking with Expediency Clause. Whereas parking of recreational vehicles, including travel trailers, on public streets or alleys typically requires two or three normal-sized parking spaces, and whereas parking of recreational vehicles, including travel trailers, on public streets or alleys dangerously impairs the view of drivers, and whereas the use of recreational vehicles, including travel trailers, typically generates trash, debris, and sewage, and whereas the above safety and health concerns need to be addressed as soon as possible, an expediency clause has been included in this ordinance. Now therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section One, SHMC Section 10.28.020 Subsection A is amended to include the following subsection. A, no person shall park or place or allow to be parked or placed any recreational vehicle on any public street or alley for any period of time except as follows. One, recreational vehicles may be parked for a period of up to two hours anywhere on Main Street or on Long Street between Holly Road and Eighteenth Avenue, so long as they comply with other city and state parking regulations. Two, an uninhabited recreational vehicle may be parked, stored, or left on a public street for up to five cumulative days in a 30-day period, but only if the vehicle is parked directly in front of the owner's property. Such vehicle must be parked in a manner not to interfere with emergency utility and postal vehicles, and must be parked in compliance with local and state law. Three, recreational vehicles owned by a public agency are exempt from this prohibition. Section Two, the following subsections of SHMC Section 10.28.020 Limited Parking Permit Parking shall be lettered in alphabetical order as follows. The current subsection A shall be lettered B, the current subsection B shall be lettered C, and so forth, so as to include all current subsections. Section Three, Expediency Clause. It is hereby adjudged and declared by the Sweet Home City Council that existing conditions are such that this ordinance is needed to be in effect at the time and date of its passage by the city council and approval by the mayor, and it is hereby declaring an emergency to promote the public health, safety, and welfare, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of January 2023. Blank Mayor attests, blank City Manager, ex officio City Recorder.
Councilors, since we were unanimous again, I will entertain a motion to have it read by the second reading, title only.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yep.
Ordinance Bill Number Three for 2023, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance amending SHMC Section 10.28.020 Limited Parking Permit Parking with Expediency Clause.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to move this to the third reading on the 24th.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Okay, we have seven ayes and no nays. To move it to the third reading on the 24th. We have no third reading of ordinance bills today. Moving on to reports of committee. I would like to say that before we hear reports currently, that if anybody would like to tell me which committees they'd be interested in sitting on in this next season, please let me know. You can either email me, text me, or speak to me after a council meeting tonight. But if anybody has any reports right now, I'd love to hear them.
I was made aware of a video today that has to do with our committee, the Community Health Committee, and so our city manager has prepared it to share it.
All right, thank you. And we did get confirmation that this can be shared publicly, but just still be where it's a little bit of a draft as well. And while we're getting ready, we want to give special thanks to the school district, particularly.
Ramil Malabaga. Ramil?
Ramil?
Malabaga.
Malabaga. And also for Adam, who also prepares the budget as well, as well as all of the students and everybody else who's involved. You'll get to see the community members as well. So thanks to everybody who's been involved in this.
I know that we'll probably want to do something in the future to recognize the individuals who are involved in this, but this was just too wonderful to postpone, given how close we are to opening the facility and the energy the students bring to the project.
And I'll also be giving an update as part of the city manager's report on where we are with this, as well as some of the next steps, stops, initiatives as well.
There we go.